Welcome to the Ousburg Village Candidate Forum, and thank you for tuning in tonight to this event sponsored by the Ousburg Chamber of Commerce. The goal is really to give you an opportunity to get to know our candidates and to make a more informed voting decision when you go to the polls on April 6th. My name is Peg Lemkel, and I'll be facilitating the questions tonight, and Teri Lemkel will be our timekeeper. So, little background, why are we doing this forum tonight? We have six candidates vying for three open trustee positions, and we have two candidates vying for one open village president position. And again, we'd like for you to get to know them tonight, and we're very happy that all eight candidates have chosen to participate tonight. How will it work tonight? We'll be asking a number of questions that each candidate will have a chance to answer. Each candidate will be limited to a prescribed timeframe, and we'll announce that timeline, or that timeframe before the question. Thank you to those community members who have submitted questions. We did our best to include them. And finally, if you see these candidates around town this week or next week, please thank them for participating. It's not easy to answer questions in a forum like this that is being livestreamed and live broadcast. So, we're going to move on to the questions at this time. Okay, candidates, you have two minutes on this first question, and what we'd like you to do is introduce yourself and tell us why you've chosen or run this year for the board position, and what qualifications and experiences that you will bring to the role. So, we're going to start with the two president candidates first, and we'll do it right now in alpha order, so we'll start with Adam Dykstra.
Thanks Peg. Thanks to the Ousburg Chamber of Commerce as well for putting this on. I'm Adam Dykstra. I've been in the community in Ousburg for approximately 10 years. Prior to that, I lived in Hingham, so I've always been in the Ousburg community. I chose to run this year because I knew that there was going to be a position open in the president's, in Al Rubel's position, and I guess I've always seen myself as a leader. I've been a deacon at our church a couple of years. I headed up our missions department team at that point in time, and during that, during that time, in addition to that, I also served on the Ousburg Christian School School Board for three years, and during that time, I served as a president for that role as well. Last, that was last year during COVID, and that, that was, was an interesting time to serve as a president during that role, to deal with some of the situations that were arising with the ever-changing dynamic that COVID was initially, and then even wrapping up the school year the way we did. I had some strong support, and I look to the board also to be that strong support that I'll have in a president's position as well, not only my, my own experiences, but also the board, what the board will bring to the table as well. That's about it.
Okay. And John?
First, I would like to thank the Ousburg Area Chamber of Commerce for having this candidate forum, and thank you to Peg and Teri for being event facilitators. Good evening. My name is John Kulo. I'm 49 years old, and I've lived in Ousburg for the last 23 years. I'm married with one son. I grew up in Hingham, seven miles west, and went to Ousburg schools, so I've been here all my life too. I've been employed by Bemis Manufacturing in Sheboygan Falls, Wisconsin for the past 31 years, and am currently a buyer in the purchasing department for our maintenance, engineering, and operations departments. I also serve as deacon at Hingham Church for the past three years, where I'm currently the general fund treasurer. I would consider myself to be fiscally conservative in my approach to our village economy. I've been interested in being more involved in our village and having run twice before. I've attended many monthly meetings, and am currently serving on the Ousburg Board of Appeals since 2016. Through my current position at Bemis Manufacturing, I've gained experience in meeting new suppliers, giving tours, and negotiating pricing. All these would be a great benefit to me in this position as village board president. I would also say it's very important to listen and ask good questions in this role, and I ask, and I also experienced this in my current positions. I will keep the village of Ousburg as one of the leading communities in Sheboygan County. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And now, we'll move to the candidates running for trustee. Again, there's three positions open and six candidates, so we'll start with Steve Egabine.
Hi, my name is Steve Egabine. I've been on the village board for the past 16 years. I served on Parks and Recreation at the beginning of my time there. One of the projects that we did was to plan, build, and get a grant for the trailhead as we brought the trail from Cedar Grove to Ousburg. Then I moved to Utilities Committee, where I'm chairman of, of that committee, and most recently, I've worked for the past three to four years on a plan, development of the sewage treatment plant, the actual designing of it, and the implementation of the build of it. So, I've worked real closely with our operator in there, and I feel that in the experience that I have, along with the experience I've had on other boards and committees, that I can continue to serve the village, continue to move the village forward into the future.
Okay. Phil?
Good evening. And again, I'd like to thank the, the Chamber of Commerce for organizing this. I think it's a great idea. My name is Phil Mentink, and except for a few years of college age, I spent my life in Ousburg. I am a lifelong resident of Ousburg, Wisconsin, and I think the reason I chose to run for the board at this particular time is mostly out of a sense of civic duty or responsibility. In the past, I've, I've served Ousburg, on Ousburg ambulances, and tried to pay back a little bit to, to the village in that small way. But now that that chapter is, is behind me, I think running as a candidate for the trustee is just another avenue I can look to, you know, show my gratitude to the, to the village and serve them. I think one of my, I have also served on the consistory of Gibbsville Reformed Church. I served two terms as a, as a deacon, and currently am serving on their, as a member of their property committee. Also, I think, I'm a, I'm a design engineer, or a consultant engineer by profession, and one thing about engineers is, some people call us a little eccentric, but we've developed, and you follow a very strong analytical approach to things. I think that, that training and just that kind of attitude is something that's needed when you look at the issues that Ousburg faces. It need, you need to identify it, evaluate it, and just get input from those that you're serving. Thank you.
Okay. And Mary Ellen?
I'd like to thank the chamber also for putting this together, and it's a great opportunity for the people to get to know everyone. My name is Mary Ellen Meyer. I was born and raised in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. I purchased my home here in Ousburg a little over four years ago, so I've been living in the community about that time. I enjoy living in a small community, and I made the decision to run for office because I want to be a voice for the people that I would be serving, working with village residents in a positive manner, working on making a positive impact, addressing the current issues, affecting the village, and again, listening to the people that it serves. I grew up in the home improvement business. My father was one of the founders of all, of Wisconsin Aluminum Supply Company in Butler, Wisconsin, so I'm very familiar with home improvements. I worked in his shop growing up, spent a lot of time there. I bring to the board experience in management. I have a degree in hotel restaurant management. I have experience in managing restaurants, and I have also managed 108-room hotel. I have worked with setting up properties, training staff, hiring, firing, and employee, employees, as well as working in cost controls. I have served on a board of directors of a variety of organizations. I've been active in my church planning fundraisers, organizing programs, and sharing programs as well. I am also an American Kennel Club Dog Show judge. I have judged for over 20 years, and if anybody knows anything about it, there's a lot that goes into even being allowed to take on that. Also, I have changed careers in the 1990s, and I went to work for the Department of Veterans Affairs for 20 years, and I worked at the Cleveland Clinic. I opened that clinic up, put it together, and that's where I retired out of the Cleveland Clinic.
Awesome. Thank you. Scott?
My name is Scott Navis. I'm married with three adult children. I've been a homeowner in Ousburg for 21 years. I have chosen to run for office because I can't sit back and complain about how things are done if I'm not willing to step up and do it. I feel some of the concerns of village members have fallen on deaf ears, and when questions about those decisions that are made, taxpayers are made to feel like they're being dismissed. There is no place for this when holding public office. I was an executive board member of the Amalgamated Transit Union for 10 years, which has 1,800 members. During that time, I learned how to figure out what's best for the whole group, how to compromise and get people involved. My current job is lead mechanic for Shoreline Metro, where I'm responsible for six, six employees, maintenance of 45 fleet vehicles, two buildings. This comes with a lot of communication in multiple departments, vendors, and contractors. I've served, served on the Transportation Development Committee for the city and the county, and I'm serving on the wellness and multiple other committees for the city, and I feel that gives me a good, good experience for this position.
Okay. Thank you. And Peter?
Good evening. My name is Peter Shetman. My wife, Jana Harmelin Shetman, was born and raised in Ousburg. We have three adult children, all graduated from OHS. We've been a resident in the village of Ousburg for over 20 years. My father immigrated to this country from Germany, and he was always proud to be an American. Both of my parents instilled on their seven children to give back to your communities, volunteer your time, and your resources whenever possible. Some of my past areas that I volunteered in has been as a church elder, a church trustee, Cub Scouts when my boys were little, Boy Scouts, Little League Baseball, been a village trustee three terms now. On the library board in Ousburg, been working with a number of the, the village members, the library director, DPW director, and just creating a good, strong communication path with the staff from the village. My career path for over 40 years have been a department manager, working with hiring staff, scheduling staff, reviewing staff, department budgets, managing the department's inventory control, inventory, purchasing, rentals, scheduling, communications within departments, within companies, short-term, long-term, planning. I come working from the private sector and the public sector. I'm presently working for Ousburg Public Schools as the Director of Buildings and So, working closely with the village and the school to advance the village of Ousburg as partners in our community.
Thanks Pete. And Ben?
Yeah, thank you for having us here. It's wonderful, and I know you had to make some venue changes, so great job on that. My name is Ben Winbin. I've been married 10 years to an incredibly supportive wife, and I've got three kids. Currently, I'm employed at a growing business within the community here. My partner with local schools to help mentor our youth into basic engineering principles. Why I've chosen to run, my wife had served as part of the Ousburg ambulance, and with changes in that, and our, changes in our family structure, I have the opportunity to serve our community. I currently serve on the Board of Appeals as well, and I'm most interested to, to learn what I can from the existing board members and help continue to grow our community using, you know, the set of moral standards that we currently have. So, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Ben. We're going to move on to question two, which is also a two-minute timeframe, and this question is, what do you see as the most important or critical short-term challenges facing the village? And similarly, what do you see as important as long-term challenges facing, facing the village? And I'd like to start on the trustee side with Mary Ellen.
You could pick on me first.
I did.
Thank you. Looking at all the issues we are facing with the communities such as the village debt, taxes, repair of our streets, and how we can promote growth in our downtown area, because we surely do not want to see that disappear. And expanding and making desirable to the people our tourism industry, so we can promote bringing people into our village, so we can keep our money here. And also working with the Chamber of Commerce to also help promote that. We must not just think about tomorrow and how the decisions we make today will affect our village. We must think long-term and how decisions we make will affect the village in 10 to 20 years. For not from now, we need to review our 10- to 20-year plan, our, I'm sorry, our comprehensive plan, as we also need to have the vision and the foresight to move forward with what we want for our community.
Okay. Thanks, Mary Ellen. And we'll move to Scott.
I believe the short and long-term challenges facing the village is the lack of citizen involvement, and when I was collecting signatures, a lot of people said, you know, they, they feel like they don't know what goes on until after it's done. And I think there's, that's a huge problem when you're, when your citizens don't feel engaged, don't feel involved. So, I think that's probably the number one problem.
Okay. And we'll move to Pete.
Looking at some of my bullet points for this question is, I'm concerned with the people and the staff of the village, village department, and having open, honest communications with them, along with the same thing mirrors with the community, open and honest communications. For a village, you know, we want to offer quality products and services to all the taxpayers of the village. In the past, we've, it's, it's been hard and difficult, but we've annually put together a balanced budget and put it forward, and in a conservative manner, so I take pride in that. Continued, what's important for a long-term would be continue selling and filling our open properties in TIF 1, TIF 2, TIF 3. With new construction, we gain much-needed tax revenues. TIF 1 sunsets in 2024. After that, it reverts back to the normal program where we have to share the tax revenue with the county, with LTC, Ousburg School District, and understanding that, that means we have less revenue coming in to pay off our financial commitments when we started TIF 1. TIF 2 was struggling as a board. We had to distress that for an additional 10 years. Each TIF normally goes 20 years. That one's been distressed for a total of 30 years, so we would be able to fulfill our commitments on that. TIF 3, we structured it totally different than 1 and 2, where the village cost to create this TIF is balanced with the revenue of the property tax received for our loan commitments. And finally, is a major long-term is, again, with our repairs of our utilities and our roads. Our, our streets are really in need. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Pete. And Ben?
Yeah, short-term, I feel our short-term is going to be just getting over the hump of having some new members onboard, you know, just the learning curve that whoever gets to get, you know, to get on the board is going to have to get through, similar with a new president. Long-term is structured around growth of the industrial park, like you were saying about the TIF, and new subdivisions, looking to local leaders to, to continue to develop those, and similar, the roads, having learned what I've, I've learned here now in the last couple of months at the board meetings, there's, there's some need of repairs for roads, and it's not just above ground, it's below ground, and the long-term outlook on that is, is how to prepare for that and how to plan for that in the future. As we continue to grow as a community, how do you plan around and get the infrastructure to where it needs to be?
And I'm going to repeat the question as we move to our president candidates. Oh, Steve, I'm sorry. And Phil? My mistake. Steve?
Short-term, this summer, we're going to be reconstructing Willow Lane. We've got problems with old water mains and a sewer main that has collapsed and is, is plugging up, so that'll be one of the bigger projects we do this summer. We try to budget as much as we can for road repair each year. We have replaced a lot of equipment, so we're pretty well situated in our antiquated trucks and snowplows and all the rest of that. We've got a few more to replace in the future, so we plan to continue with that. Our debt structure right now is in very good shape. We have a lot of room to borrow money if we do need to do big projects, like we did with Center do need to do big projects, like we did with Center Avenue. We put that off for, I don't know how many years, because of the cost it was going to be done. And when we finally were pressured by the county to do it, you know, we're in a good position to structure that debt and get that all done. And, you know, it's a great project, too. I think the industrial parks are huge, the TIFs are huge. We've been getting slow movement on the industrial park. Viking and Masters have been great additions to the community. They're great civic companies. They do great fundraisers and support the community in that respect. The clinic was a big one. So, I think our TIFs are moving in the right direction. They're always a challenge, especially after the bust in '08, when everything came to a stop. Subdivisions sat empty. And so, I think right now, we're positioned well financially and into the future. I think we've got a lot of things going for us. We're trying to bring Ouzburg out into the county as a place that's open and available, and try to bring people in, bring businesses in, and encourage our existing businesses.
Okay. And Phil?
As far as the short-term means, I think one of the most pressing challenges we have is, again, as someone else mentioned, to re-engage with the public. From discussions I've had with people in the past couple of months, there seems to be an apparent disconnect in what, you know, people want and how they see the board operating. And I think that's important. I mean, we get that resolved, and again, get the people to have a certain trust in it. Being on a board is a tight little job. It's a harder job, but we do it the primary way to really get the people back involved. And after all, it is worth it to be served. Long-term, I agree with many of the candidates here, infrastructure, this is a, um, much of the uncertainty for structure and the aging. A lot of it is the original stuff, and it's perfectly, you know, began to replace infrastructure, it's expensive. It takes a lot, and it's very limited funding. So, again, the long-term infrastructure, we need those needs and maintaining and growing what we have. It's going to be a challenge for us.
One second. Phil, could you do it one more time? We, the audio went out on you.
Absolutely not. You get one shot. Now, I think the short-term concern I have is, in discussions with some of the community members, there seems to be a lack of communication or a breakdown of communication. And I think that has led to some levels of trust. And I think as elected officials, we really need the people to get behind us, support us, and we, of course, have to support them. So, we have to find a way to bridge that gap. That's going to be one of our most critical things we do. Long-term, the aging infrastructure of Ouzburg. Roads, streets, sewers, water distribution, you know, all that stuff, it's required, it's necessary, but it's very expensive to fix and maintain. So, I think to ensure the future growth of Ouzburg, it's going to take a lot of hard work and a lot of hard questions and answers, but I think we'll get there. And that's going to be one of the long-term concerns I have.
Thanks Phil for repeating. Sorry about the audio issue. Okay, and then, again, for, we're talking about short-term and long-term challenges for the village, so we'll move to our presidential candidates. And John, we'll start with you this time. Can you put your mic up?
Our most important short-term challenges are the following. First, the internal cleaning and preventive maintenance of the water tower. This will involve getting several extra tanks and pumps to get us through the four weeks that this will be affecting us. And second, I believe, reconstruction of Willow Lane. This will take place sometime between April and September approximately, be with very little base. This would be very expensive, replacing the buried utilities, but very necessary project for the village, especially for that neighborhood with the utility problems that they've had with water flooding and stuff. Most important long-term challenges, to me, would be our roads. We have a list of roads that need to be addressed. Several have the same challenges as Willow Lane, such as Huron Avenue, Ontario Avenue, South Ninth Street, and North Ninth Street. Staying on this program and adding these, addressing these roads from worst condition to best will help us get these roads in better shape for our residents, so they will last well into the future. Other long-term challenges would include continued growth in our business community, continued paying down our debt. I would also keep rotating out old equipment and buying new, more efficient equipment through our budget process.
Okay, thank you. And Adam?
Short-term goals, or short-term challenges, excuse me, that are impacting us. John touched on pretty much everything I was going to cover. We've got Willow Lane going on, as well as in front of the fire department. That's going to be a big deal this summer. I also think communication is going to be big, I think, this summer, as others have alluded to, as far as how we are going to, as a board, communicate with the community to make them feel that their voice is being heard. I think the board has done a good job of that, but I think we can always do better. I also think to look at our staffing and things like that, and make sure our staffing is getting the proper training, that it needs to be successful, and what we're asking them to do as far as water and sewer is concerned, and things like that. With the new administration and some of the executive orders that have been signed already, I'm concerned about what that means for us as a community, as far as DNR implications and things like that. And also, I'd also like to hopefully get our first responders implemented in the next year as well. I know that's something that they've been working, the board has been working diligently with, and I think that's important to this community as well, in the short-term. Long-term, I'm going to repeat everything everybody else said. I think our roads are in tough shape in certain areas of the community. You know, I think we had two or three water main breaks this winter. I mean, if you drive down the road, you'll see where those spots were. We need, those need to get addressed sooner than later. And then, also, the TIFs, you know, filling up our TIFs is important, I guess, in the, from the president's position, getting that done to facilitate getting the right people in there, and the people that are in there, giving them the tools they need to be successful in to keep expanding. You see Viking Masonic expanding right now, which is exciting, you know, and we hope that the others in those areas will also continue to expand. Thank you.
So, the next question will be a challenge. So, one minute is your timeframe. And it is, how do you plan to involve residents in the decision-making process on village issues? For example, if a community member has concerns about the winter parking restrictions, what would be your approach to handling their concern? Okay, and we're going to start with Pete.
All right. Thank you. As far as engaging our community members, I've always encouraged all village residents to come to village board meetings. Please be a participant in our meetings. That's open to the public, and when they can't attend due to their prior commitments, they can always go to the village website and look at the published minutes from the previous meetings. As community residents, I've also encouraged them to reach out to any board member with questions and concerns concerning maybe parking in the village streets, any issues that they may have. All input from the residents are welcome. Where there is constructive communication and information shared by both parties, the picture becomes clear in how to proceed on these matters for the entire community to benefit from it. Assisting in creating a strong and vibrant village to live, work, and to raise a family and worship in.
Thanks Pete. Let's move to Ben.
Yeah, the, as far as involvement, like you said, it's available, and oftentimes, people run into time commitments or constraints to be able to participate. What I'd like to see or just consider as a group would be a way to communicate better, maybe even using technology or a social platform, where there's something that can be out in front of the, front of the public, where they don't have to go digging for information. So, using just technology is such a valuable tool, using that to our advantage, and being able to reach out to the community with similar questions about parking or anything else that's come up, and even using a forum like this, or any other types of options that are available.
And Steve?
Our village meetings are all public, and we're always thankful to see people come, although most people don't come. We kind of take it as a sign that we must not be doing anything too terrible, because if nobody shows up, there's no complaints. We started a Facebook page to give information, like reminding people when there's a holiday that trash is going to be delayed, when leaf pickup starts and stops. This information is also available on the website. If you have questions, you can talk to any board member. Our numbers are listed. And our clerk is fantastic. She can answer most of your questions. She has access to the ordinances and all of that. So, we're available. We want you there and help. We want you to be understandable, but I don't know what other platform we can use to get information out or what people want to hear. So, we are trying, but if we have other suggestions, we're open.
Okay. And Phil?
Yeah, I think the key to that is getting people actively involved in it. And I think there's some very simple steps we can take to make sure we open those lines of communication. For example, one of them is just identifying all the trustees and their contact information on the website. Right now, that information isn't there, and it takes, I mean, it is, but you've got to kind of navigate around to find it. So, I think just the simple, write on the homepage to have that information. I think the other way we can look at it is to look at some of the new IT technology. People tend not to go out of their way to participate, but, you know, now in the days of Zoom or some of these other internet conferencing, it's a great opportunity to get those people involved and at least made aware of what's going on.
And Mary Ellen?
I think we need to share information with the people that we are supposed to be serving. Make people feel that they have a voice in what's going on in their village. Provide open public forums for people to come and to talk and to discuss issues. I would like to make sure I'm available to discuss any concerns or suggestions people might feel are important or need to be addressed in our community. I would also make sure people have access to not only my email, but my phone number. Feel free to call me if they have concerns, so they can feel a part of their village, because that's what we are. We are supposed to be serving the people.
And Scott?
I think we can use, the village could use their website and their Facebook page to disseminate more information. They could even put on their Survey Monkey poll questions about, you know, a couple of things that they'd want to see done. I'm not saying everything, just a couple of things. One of the complaints I had heard was the agenda is too vague. Let people know what's actually going on in these meetings. Maybe the Facebook page could explain it a little more, not necessarily a legal binding document, but, you know, people aren't involved, they're going to read that and say, I, that doesn't help me at all. And the same with the minutes. So, I think letters could be sent out to ordinance changes, similarly as when there's a zoning change. If your neighbor wants to add on to his garage, all the neighbors get letters. When ordinances are changed that affect certain groups of people, they don't know nothing about it.
Okay. And then we'll move to our candidates for president with the same question, and we'll start with Adam.
Everybody's, a lot of people have said it again. Getting people involved, I think, is important, that people realize when the meetings are. They are open meetings. They're Thursdays, the first Thursday before the first Monday of the month, and then it's on Monday. And it's a great opportunity for people to come in to listen, and then to decide, you know, do I need to contact somebody, or don't I need to contact somebody? And I think the other thing we can do is, we can be better at communicating. I don't know if a social media platform is the right means for that yet, but I want to look into what options are out there. You know, I think it's important to have our phone numbers available, or emails available, that people, that you can respond to people, and that they know that you're available for questions, or comments, or concerns. But also, you know, again, to continue to come to those meetings and be involved, or at least even send a representative if they're not able to participate.
Okay. And John?
I would involve residents in the decision-making process in our village by, for the major decisions that are of major importance, have listening sessions, as well as answering questions as much as I'm able to. I would agree that looking at technology and what new ideas are out there that can help make it easier for residents to be involved is a great idea. I would also encourage all residents that this is open meetings, and we want you there. I would say, too, that all our information, our email address, phone numbers should be readily available, so we could get, be gotten ahold of by anybody if you have a question, and we'll answer it as best as we can.
Okay. Thank you, candidates. Next one is also one minute. This might be a tough one. If you received a million-dollar grant to use for the village in any way you wanted, what would you do with it and why? And we're going to go, start with our presidential candidates again. And so, Adam, you would be up.
If I had a million dollars, I think there's a song that goes something like that. If I had a million dollars, I think the one thing I'd like to look at is, I'd like to poll our village workers right now on what's out there as far as what skills they have or what they don't have. And then, important, more importantly, is maybe invest some of that into an investment account for a scholarship for some of the students in the high school, that, hey, you don't have to go to college, there's opportunities here within our village that you can be doing things. The other thing I'd like to do is offset some of the costs of some of the infrastructure changes we need to make. Again, touching on the fact that we have multiple water main failures this past year. We've got infiltration issues in our storm sewers and stuff like that, all of which costs us as a village money. And, you know, if we can help offset that a little bit, I think it's a big deal. But again, those are big dollar projects, that a million dollars is going to be a small percentage of that.
Okay, thank you. And John?
If I would receive, if we'd received a million-dollar grant for use in the village, I would put a good chunk of it towards our road construction projects. We could do several projects at one time and take advantage of this opportunity. That, along with other financial avenues, we could, we could take care of several of the roads that are in really bad shape right now in one time. We could also put money towards trying to encourage more companies to come and take advantage of the TIF districts that we have available, and fill up these districts with companies having them come here to our village.
Okay, thank you. And moving on to trustee candidates, we're going to start with Phil. If you received the million-dollar grant to use for the village, what would you do with it and why?
I think a portion of that I would use to provide means for the village to become more, or the village residents to become more involved. Example, some of the IT technology that we could invest in to be able to offer Zoom. It's a great way to reach out to the people and let them become actively involved. And it's very convenient and easy for them to do. I think another portion of the money I would look at investing in additional recreational facilities for them. We have one central park, and I think we could have a couple scattered around. It's a great benefit to the community as well. And then, again, like others have said, look at how we can find ways to keep our infrastructure strong, and how we can find ways to fund that.
Okay. And Mary Ellen, let's jump to you.
If we had that money, first thing I would do is work on reducing some of the village debt. Put some of this money into offering incentives to promote small businesses to come into the Ouzburg community, with the hope that we can somehow work on expanding our downtown area, improving our tourism, and building up a little bit, promoting some more businesses to come into the area. Having construction underway to work and complete the additional park, the money that was appropriated and the land purchased to build that second park, getting that park done, and repairing of our village roads. That's where I would put some of that money.
Okay. And Scott? Okay. And Scott?
I would also take some of that money and provide it to businesses to try to get them to locate here. Help out the current businesses we have. You set some criteria. I know it's easy to just say it. And also, I, I would like to use some of that money to buy more road salt so we can salt more than just the intersections. Because you've got to be able to turn in the middle of the road. That's it.
Okay. Pete, let's move to you.
As we spoke earlier, you know, the infrastructure and the road repairs in the village is desperately needed. Throughout the past number of years, we've taken out of our annual budget funds to replace the equipment, like Steve had mentioned, with new plow truck, new front-end loader, vac all truck, leaf machines, street sweeper to help. But to take some of this money also, as Mary mentioned, for our park improvements, for our park expansion, you know, we're planning a new park on the south side of Center Avenue. And that's important to the families of this community. And just keeping up with our fire department, our public library, and our pump houses. So, that's where I'd put some of this funding.
Okay. And Ben?
Yeah, and I echo similar to what most others said, the infrastructure too. Roads, do you take a considerable amount of investment to continue? What the other ones would be communities, community areas as far as parks, even though, you know, we do have one going up on the east. Just to continue to improve the veterans park that we do have, allowing families to get out and move around a little bit better, better walkways and bike paths, things that promote good health. So, between the, the roads and, between the roads and the community center, that's where I would put it.
And Steve?
I guess everything has already been said, but infrastructure is expensive. And that's always a big challenge, is trying to get money to pay for these projects. Because when you just do a, paving over a road is not as expensive, but when you go down to a new base, new pipes, it all becomes very expensive. Parks and Recreation is always something we budget for. We bought three lots south of the dentist office, and we're working on that. We've applied for some grants for that. So, that would be one, and it'd be nice to finish that all off rather than having to take, you know, three, four years to get it all accomplished. I guess those are the high points.
Okay. This next question was submitted by a member of the community, and it came in as, during your term of office, what will you work on to make Ousperg a better place to live, and how will you do that? And I think you've all talked about some of that already, so I'm going to change the question to be, what is something you'd prioritize in the first year of your term to make Ousperg a better place to live? And how would you do that? So, I'm going to just give you a minute to absorb that question because you've not seen it before. And we're going to be starting with Scott. So, take your time.
I guess the, the first thing is the communication, the openness, the perception the public has of the board. And then a lot of other things, people fall along with that. There's very little cost in that. There's some, but there's very little. And then just the continued infrastructure repair.
Okay. And we'll move on to Pete.
Well, tying into that is, again, the community involvement and moving in a positive direction, working with the staff of the village and repairing our roads and building, bringing in new businesses into our TIF district. So, again, we can grow as a community.
Okay. And Ben?
The number one priority, just getting to learn the ins and outs of the, of the village board itself and going through the turnover that, that may happen here. And, and then, as Pete was saying, get to involve or bring in more businesses and get the TIF district going as the main priority. And then communication overall of what, what's happening in the community and what the future outlook with long-term goals are.
Okay. Steve?
I guess the parks are a priority. We have a lot of trees that have died in the existing park, and the play structures are starting to deteriorate a little bit. They're not that old. They've been replaced with plastic years ago. And finishing up the second park that we're working on. Recruiting new businesses and, and supporting our existing business is always a priority. I think D and D Hardware is talking about some plans for some development and, you know, so we're supporting them in whatever way we can.
Okay. And Phil?
I think my number one goal would be, others have said, to rebuild those lines of communication. I think we need to get the input from the people so that we can prioritize what's important to them. I mean, obviously, there's, there's decisions that the board have to make based on their knowledge and, and that, but getting the public to support us and tell us what's important to them would be probably my number one goal.
Okay. And Mary Ellen?
A lot of what's been said already, but also I think the most important thing is building the confidence in the people that live here, in the board that they have elected, feeling that they are getting their support and they have a say-so in what's going on in their community.
Okay. Thank you. And same question, moving on to the two president candidates. Again, I'm going to repeat it for the audience. During your term of office, what will you work on to make Ousperg a better place to live and how will you do that? And we've amended the question to say, how, what will you prioritize in your first year of office? And we're going to start with John.
I would say, first, I would agree to address the current park, Ousperg Village Park, and address the trees and the equipment, and finish the second park on the south side of Center Street. Encourage, as well as encourage businesses to come here, and the ones that are thinking about expanding, to encourage that. And let them know that Ousperg is behind them, and that's what the village residents want to see. So, it's, it's important for us to be behind that.
Okay. Thank you. And Adam?
First thing I would do is I'd finalize the development agreement that the village board has been working on. There's an agreement that they've done to set up so that basically when, when new road construction occurs, new developments are made up, that they're following a certain procedure. I think that's going to be critical in Ousperg in the next, in the, in the next year. If you look at all the subdivisions and everything else, they are quite full. And so, there, you, you know there's more subdivisions in the horizon. And so, we need to get that development agreement finalized so that we can make sure that we don't have a here-on-or-Michigan Avenue in our, in our, in our community anymore. And the other thing I've heard, you know, community, and then the other thing, I, I don't know if it was Al Rubel that said this, but why not Ousperg? Let's get community, let's get people here. Why don't, why not Ousperg? Why, why Sheboygan? Why, why Sheboygan Falls? Why not Ousperg?
Okay. Thank you. This next question is directed at the non-incumbents. So, the question is, what have you done to prepare for the role? In other words, have you been getting up to speed on the business of the village? And if so, how have you been doing it? And we're going to start with Ben.
Yeah, as far as preparation that I've done, I've been going to the meetings and just listening to the current events and taking, taking information as I get it and asking, asking questions of, of the happenings and how the decisions are made and items like that, so that, you know, as the, as the election comes, I'm prepared to, to take, to take a seat.
Okay. And we'll jump over to Phil.
Yeah, I think one of the, the best preparation is my experience as my professional life. Over those years, I've worked with many communities as clients that are similar to Ousperg. And most communities have the same problems as Ousperg. We're not unique in any means. But working over those years, I've been involved with them. I understand some of the processes they have to go through. I'm used to dealing with a lot of the regulatory agencies they have to deal with, state and federal regulations that they have to address. That's all been, you know, kind of built up over the years of, as a consultant to a lot of communities.
And Mary Ellen?
First thing I did is I went and picked up a copy of the 20, or 10 to 20-year comprehensive plan and tried to review a lot of that. It's a lot of information to review in a short period of time. But I felt that's important because those were things that they felt of the way that the community should move. I've gone around and I've talked to business owners in town. I've tried to get the perspective on what they see, what they would like to see for the future. I've also driven around town just to look at everything around the community and how everything is laid out, and what we could do better. And I think the most important thing again is involving people, listening to the people, and talking to people.
Okay. And Scott?
Just went to a few board meetings, tried to keep up on the ones I couldn't attend with the minutes in the agenda, which is kind of difficult. Talking to some business owners, my neighbors, people that live on the other side of town, people I know, people I pass by at the grocery store, just trying to get feedback from them on where they want to see things go.
Okay. And then jumping to our two presidential candidates, we'll start with Adam. Same question, which is, what have you done to prepare for the role? In other words, have you been getting up to speed on the business of the village? And if so, how?
Yeah, so I've attended most, I've attended all the board meetings and all the pre-board meetings as well for the last, since, since probably October. So, I've been, I feel pretty, like I've got, starting to get a handle on what's going on there. If there's a lot to drink yet from a fire hose. And the other thing I've done is I've also attended other meetings of other groups and things like that to see, you know, when decisions are being made, what those impacts might have on the board, or if there's, you know, to make sure we're hearing both sides of the aisle as well.
And John?
I've too been attending the meetings as a whole and regular board meetings. I'm also, with being on the Board of Appeals, have a unique experience with, from that point of view, and communication with the current board members, talking with them, and keeping up on what's, the current events of the time, and listening to what the village residents are saying when I went around for my signatures.
Okay. Thank you. And the last question, it's, it's really not a question, it's an opportunity for each of you to give closing remarks and whatever you'd like to tell the voters. And you have a minute and a half to say whatever you would like to say. So, I'm going to go back to the presidential candidates, and we'll start with Adam.
I guess come April, everybody's got a decision to make. In John and my case, there is no incumbent. I think regardless, I think we're going to be stepping into, there's going to be some big shoes to fill. And I, I feel up to the challenge. I believe I can do it right by, by you as the village. But at the same time, I also want to remind the village that we all, or at least myself, I have a job eight to five that requires some attention as well. So, if I'm not getting back to you, just know that my desire is to serve you, but also know that we also have other, I also have other commitments. But I will hear you out. I live in town, so you're always welcome to come by. And I live in 312 Westfield Court. Come on down. If I'm in the front yard, I'd love to talk to anybody.
And John?
I'd like to thank Ousperg Area Chamber of Commerce for sponsoring this forum. Thank you for Pagan Terry for being facilitators. I look forward to helping Ousperg grow and flourish, keeping, keep improving our debt position, keep rotating out old equipment as we can and replace it with newer, more efficient. I'll work hard every day for all the village residents, listening to you, helping you in any way I'm able. I live in 204 North 15th Street. You're also welcome to come by and talk to me anytime. So, I'll keep working to keep Ousperg growing, do my very best to encourage more businesses to give Ousperg a try. It's a fast, it's a fantastic place to live and do business. Thank you so much for this opportunity. God bless.
Okay. And we'll move on to Steve.
I think the village is moving in a good direction with the industrial parks, with the growth, with the support we've been giving and, and continue to give to the local businesses with the road projects, the sewage treatment plant, with all the things that we've done coming to this point. I think going forward, we just need to keep ourselves on task and continue to keep the village residents in the loop with things. And I think we've got a good future for us here.
Okay. And Phil?
Yes. I think the village of Ousperg is in a great position. Obviously, I've, as a resident of Ousperg, I've chosen to raise my family here. I don't think I'd leave it for any other place. But on a more personal note, I think when you run for a position in an elected official, one of the things you have to remember is that you're a representative of the people that elected you. And you have to remain accessible to them and give them an opportunity to give them a chance to, to speak and, and let them know their feelings. I think then when you have that input, you need to take that and really apply that to whatever you're addressing as far as needs. You identify the problem, look at all the pros and cons, look at it from all sides, and then act in the best interest of what you believe that is for the community. That may not always be the most popular answer, but it has to be done. I think you also have to remember that you're accountable to those people. So, again, I want to thank the Ousperg Chamber of Commerce for organizing this. And then to the people of Ousperg, please, I encourage you to take the time to get to know all the candidates, speak to them, try and determine what their positions are and their philosophies, and then exercise your right and vote.
Okay. And we'll go to Mary Ellen.
I want to thank the community. I want to thank the chamber for putting this on. You've done a great job. But I'd also like to say that to me, the most important thing is that we are serving, when we are elected, we are supposed to be serving the best interests of the people. We need to listen to the people. We need to address the issues that are here. Not, as Phil said too, not always sometimes conclusions are the ones everybody really wants to hear, but also trying to make decisions that are in the best interest of the community. But again, we can't look at what's happening tomorrow. We have to really look at the long-term plan. What's this community, community going to look like 10 to 20 years from now? What's it going to be like for our future people? Are we going to have enough roads? Are we going to have enough business here? So, we need to really take a good, hard look at all of that and how we can move forward. I myself, I'm a go-getter. I believe in working hard and accomplishing the things that need to be done. And that's what I would try to do as a board member.
Okay. And Scott?
I feel I'd be a good fit for the board because of my past and current experiences. I think the board is in need of some fresh blood, and that's why I decided to step up to the plate. Thank you for watching and getting involved in the democratic process, and don't forget to vote.
Okay. And Pete?
What I have to offer is 42 years of business knowledge, managing budgets, community volunteering, proven leadership, and a strong conservative person. I know there's a lot that goes into decision-making as far as our village board goes. One, one item that I think our public should really, and, and they do use it as our public library, it's a gem that we have. The dedication from the people that work there is beautiful. I mean, our library director has worked there for over 32 years. And let me tell you, these people don't get paid a lot, but they do it for the community. And just a short story, you know, when I moved into town, I was fortunate enough to move into a New York avenue. And I came home early from work one day, and, and my wife had to go out and take care of her mother, Sally. And my kids wanted to go out in the little swimming pool. So, my neighbor came over and said, "Why are you home from work?" I said, "I have a migraine and it's terrible, and the kids want to be in the pool." Seve Vanderpluig said, "Go to bed. I'll take care of the kids." Those are the type of mentors that are in this community, the servant hearts that, you know, support this community. that, you know, support this community. And those are shining examples. You know, I have many other ones. But lastly, I'd like to just publicly thank Alan Rubel, over 30 years of putting his time on the line for the community. He was a Marine, he had a family that was raised in Ouzburg. I mean, his, his foresight, his leadership, and his guidance has taken the village a long way. So, thank Alan for his service to the village.
Thank you. And Ben?
Yeah, in closing, I'm, like most others here, I'm just passionate about the community, the, the family setting that it is, the unique, the uniqueness, the people that we are, that just make it a great, great community to live in. I'd be honored to gain the trust and serve as a, as a village board member, to continue to grow the community in the same way that it has grown to date, by inviting new businesses and, and really focusing on keeping the same type of community, just in a larger fashion. So, thank you.
Excellent. You can all now breathe a sigh of relief, because there are no more questions. So, to our audience, thank you for tuning in, and thank you for taking time to get to know our candidates. And please be at the polls on April, Tuesday, April 6th. And again, thank you, thank you to all of you. Good night.